Okay, so we are having a little bit of technical difficulties with iCompass. So we're doing, we're old school tonight and taping manually right now. So that's what we're doing. So anyway, Kelly, we'll let you jump in. This is, I'll confess, this is awesome, right out of the gate. I can't wait to hear the background, but I was looking through the slides and the personalization you did was pretty solid. Doesn't surprise me, but it was pretty neat.
Thank you. I'm a little nervous, but I'll calm down.
Oh, you're good. You're good.
Okay, um, I wasn't, I didn't print this out, so I'm gonna kind of work off this.
Okay.
If I wander that way, will it still pick me up? The mic?
Yeah, we should be okay.
All right, so I'm Kelly Smith, City Assessor. And before we leave here, you know, short amount of time before I leave here, you're gonna, I'm gonna answer these questions. What is an assessment or assessed value? What is personal property? How do we handle machine tax, tribunal appeals? What is a principal residence exemption? And a bunch more, so get ready. Okay, so assessment administration is one of the three broad statutory duties that is the state mandates for the local units. The other two are elections and tax collection. So tax collections and assessing go hand in hand. Assessment in a nutshell is to locate and identify every single property, taxable property, within the city or township. And then we have to fairly and equitably value all these properties. Okay, um, in the state of Michigan, we assess at 50% of fair market value. And there's also other values that have, that come into play. So AV assessed value is 50% of the market value. Taxable value came about after polls later in 1994. And, um, that puts a cap on how much your taxes can increase over a year. So taxable value can only go up cost of living, whatever cost of living is for the year. While market value can skyrocket like it's doing now. Taxable value is capped. So there's capped versus uncapped. And the capped is the taxable value, only going up so much. And there's also a transfer, when a, when a house sells or any kind of property sells, it's called a transfer. And the taxable value uncaps the following year of the transfer. So it catches up to the assessed value that following year. There's also new and losses, new additions, new building, new construction, losses if you take something down. Then the millage is applied to the taxable value. Most properties, especially in the market today, we're seeing a large gap between the assessed and taxable values, just because the market is so hot. And then we also have true cash value, which is the same thing as fair market value. And SEV, which is state equalized value, that's assessed value with any county or state equalization factor applied, this hardly ever happens. It's, if the assessor isn't doing the job and raising the values up the way they should, then that, that comes into play. Sorry. All right, so, so just to give you an example on how taxes are calculated, I just took a, like a $200,000 home. So TV would be half of it, just assuming that TV is half of it. You apply the millage, this is, I applied 30 miles, that's not what we, ours were in the 40s. And then you divide by 1,000, and that gives you $3,000 with the taxes, property taxes. There's all kinds of classes of property here. In Walker, we have residential, commercial, industrial, and exempt. There's also agricultural, developmental, timber cutover, we don't have any of that. And you need to know that class and zoning are not hand in hand. So we have a lot of stuff that's still zoned agricultural, but all of our agricultural properties are in the res class, residential. Still trying to calm down.
Oh, you're fine. Deep breath, you're amongst friends.
Thank you. All right, so I'm gonna go over the assessing cycle, the main points in the assessing cycle. And then I'm gonna start with building permits. If someone comes in, if a contractor or builder comes in to get the permit, and then the community development department issues that permit. And we get a copy of that permit, we enter all the information into our system. Our system is BSNA, it's almost everybody in the state uses that. And then, um, we pull those blueprints or the plans, and then we have to draw a sketch of the house in our system on the Apex software. That's a sketch program. And so we need to know these two, Apex and BSNA, we need to know those two systems. And we also need to be able to read blueprints and plans. And, um, I have provided some samples, your own personal samples. The first is pages one and two is a record card of your own home, if you're in Walker. Pages three, passively three A, and that's the Apex sketch of your home. So that card is personalized for you. Okay, next comes fieldwork. So we take these building permits, and throughout the year, we're going out doing fieldwork to check to see if this construction is done. I didn't say anything, but if you guys have questions as I'm going, just speak up.
So Kelly, real quick, that, so page three and four, the, that's actually done in that, the Apex software?
That's sketches, of course.
Okay.
This is BSNA.
Correct, yeah, okay, well.
No cash holdup.
Yeah, first time I've seen one of those, that's kinda neat.
Okay, so, um, we'll take the permits and the field, the cards and while in the field a couple times a year until we see that the construction of that particular place is done. And then we take photos, we bring the information back to the card. And something important to know is tax day is December 31st of our year. We have to, we have to assess things as of that day, the status of that property that day. So if it's a partial construction, we have to take that into consideration. If it's an after God meeting, tornado, fire, anything like that, we have to pull off the value based on what's there. And, um, once the appraisal is completed and done, we, in our system, we get an assessment for it. All right, so there's also lots of, oh, sorry, slow down. Page four is a, is a sample of a building permit. This is for one of the apartment buildings in West Town, one of the most. Okay, documents, we go through, we have to process a lot of documents. Whenever there's a transfer of ownership occurs, there are two documents that need to be filed. One is a deed at Kent County Register Deeds Office, and they make sure that we get a copy of every single deed that, from Walker, so they share that information with us. And then also, a property transfer affidavit needs to be filed. And then, um, and they have the, those come to us. And then, if it's a homeowner's resident, the main resident, it's, they have to file the principal residence exemption. This alleviates 18 miles of school operating tax. And that outside is due by August. And I've got some samples of those forms. Page five is a deed. This is for a little shop, it's for River City Auto and Transmission on Remembrance Road. And then page six is a sample of the property transfer affidavit. And then seven is to be sent to take off the PRV, so the previous owner would file that at the time of sale. And then page eight is the principal residence exemption, the new person would file that if they qualify. All right, so we have to do a land value study. It's based on a two-year spread of range of sales. And for the 2019 assessments, it was from April 1st to 2016 through March 31st of 2018. So the sales are lagging behind for what the year value that we're creating. And, um, and in the land sale, you'd like to use vacant land sales. Those aren't easy to find, especially in neighborhoods that have been there for a while. So what I do is I take the improved sales and assign 25% to the land value. So then I adjust the land based on that number. And, um, land values typically go up where improvements depreciate and go down sometimes, but the market continues to, land values almost always go up. All right, economic condition factor studies, uses the same range of sales, the same date range. And in a residential class, we have 68 residential neighborhoods. So they're all studied individually. This process takes a long time to do ECS studies. And then we have one commercial and one industrial neighborhood. And what the ECS study is, is it takes, it takes the recent sales, removes the land value, and then compares the remainder, which is called the building residual, to what the, what the cost manual says the building should be. And it creates a ratio. So we're getting a ratio for every sale. Excuse me. And then that pile of sales, like say Chesterfield Heights, probably has 50, 60 sales for that time period. So you have a lot of information to work with, and that number is what tells you how much that neighborhood should increase. Okay, um, personal property. First, we do a canvas, name Crystal out, do a canvas every year, usually takes a day or two. And we just drive up and down the commercial industrial corridors, making notes of new companies, companies that you know a lot of, you see their signs, that kind of stuff. We bring it in, she put, enters that stuff into the, this is Chris Trotter, Deputy Assessor by law. And she enters all that stuff into the system so that we have new parcels for these personal property. And then, um, this is a self-reporting tax, meaning that these, these companies fill this form out themselves, and there's, there's a way to check it, but you'd have to go into their books and do that kind of thing. People are gonna be happy about that, but, this is a self-reporting tax. We have about 1,500 personal property parcels. And there are three types of forms. Personal property's changed a lot in the last few years. So pages nine through 12 is a traditional personal property statement, lots of information on there you can get. There's places to put like lease information, scattered a lot of information in this one. And then a couple years ago, in the changes that the state made, they came up with this small business property tax exemption. And this is page 13. And this is for businesses that have less than 80,000 true cash value of property, personal property. Did I explain what personal property is even? I skipped that part. It's on machinery equipment, furniture fixtures inside of a business. So they have to pay taxes on all this stuff. So this, this small one came about a couple years ago, and they used to have to file it annually, and this year they just switched it to, once they file it, it's in place. So we won't have to deal with those, not a lot anymore. And then pages 14 through 17 is what we call EMP, Eligible Manufacturing Personal Property Statements. These things are, but we get through them, and they have to be manufacturing some, so they're, it's not a large percentage of them. So after the personal property is done, we've done all these studies, then we do the assessment change notices. This is what everybody, every property owner gets. It usually comes in February, beginning in February, mid-February. And this also tells what your assessment is, what your taxable value is, what your class is, if there's a transfer on the property. And it also tells you how to appeal to the March border review. So that, the sample of that that should be your own is on page 18. So next comes border review. We have three different times of the year for border review. There's March, July, and December. March is the big one, although the last couple years it hasn't been heard. They've had like a dozen appeals, we don't get a lot lately. But, um, March is the one that folks can come in to appeal their assessment before the board. The board is three homeowners here in Walker, three taxpayers. If they provide evidence to support their opinion of value, more than likely they're gonna persevere. If they come in with nothing, they're probably not gonna get any more. July and December border review is for correcting errors of mutual mistakes, so that's a pretty light one. So that was the assessment cycle in a nutshell. And there's also a lot more things that we have to take care of. Oh, again, skipping ahead. Page 19 and 20 is a border review petition. That's what they have to file for the March border review to appeal. All right, so Michigan Tax Tribunal Appeals. After border review, they can appeal up further to the state level. And there's, there's small claims, which is normally the residential ones. And that's handled locally, they always set up, Harry's in Kent County, so we don't have to go that far. And then there's also entire tribunal appeals, also the big ones, the commercial, the industrial. And we have an attorney, Ingrid Jensen from Clark Hill, I've worked with her ever since I've been in the office, she's awesome. She handles all the paperwork for the entire tribunals, because it's a lot of legal paperwork. And typically in a year, we typically, typically get about six or seven appeals. Back in the 2008, 2009, when the market was really bad, we're getting 25 to 30 appeals a year. And right now, currently, I have no open appeals. No, no, I'm so shocked. And just, we just closed in March border review a couple months ago, and I still don't have any for 2019 yet either. But there's, the deadline isn't until July, so, end of July, so might get some, who knows? All right, the next thing I wanna talk about is exemptions. There's, more and more exemptions are popping up all the time. The first one is the industrial facilities tax payment. I call it 198. That's just the number at the state level. Pages 21 through 28 is the application. A lot of paperwork for an IFT. And we're getting fewer and fewer of those, too. And I think that's because of the changes in the personal property. The industrial personal property is slowly going away, and commercial's still gonna have to pay personal property tax, but industrial is slowly going away. So if we get an IFT anymore, it's more for a new building, kind of thing. Sorry. The next exemption is a disabled veterans exemption. That's page 29. We've got 38, I think I have a 39 one, the new guy filed one that I have to put through our next border review. But 38, so they're always getting, because they have to be 100% disabled, so we're, I guess the VA is giving people more and more of that staff, so they're popping up more. The next one is a poverty exemption. That's page 30 through 34. These, we haven't had one of these in a couple years, have we? They're, they're poverty.
You get them at the normal room and qualify, because it has to meet the federal poverty guideline, the threshold, and most people are making more of the money than that, so they don't qualify for it.
The next one is just a general property tax exemption. This is ones that are for educational, charitable, that kind of things. We're getting more and more of these. And I just updated this form, because it's gonna be at the next few more. 35 through 38 is for the property tax exemption. Page 38 gives us a list of the documents that we would need from the company, and then they have to fill out the whole form. And I typically run exemption requests past Ingrid, because she knows all the laws and insubtanz and things that are latest at the tribunals, and she's a good one to take it by. All right, and then pages 39 through 44 is a current list of all the properties that are exempt, this will be in Walker.
Kelly, sorry, can I ask a quick question? On those exemptions, is there anybody, like, how would people get assistance in filling out those forms? Can they come to the assessor's office for that, or is that something they need to have done?
For the poverty one?
Well, the other, the disabled, but yeah, I mean, I don't know, how do they?
I help the disabled vets. I help them. When the disabled, when the disabled vet one first comes in, there's a list of paperwork that I need from them, so I make sure that they know what they're looking for. If I have to find a deed, I can find it on Kent County. So they can, I, we help with that. The poverty, we often help with the poverty. The general property one, they're on their own. They usually have lawyers themselves to do that kind of thing.
All right, thanks.
So you'll see from this list, the first couple pages are all pretty much city, or governor, really, a city, county, state. And then towards the last couple pages, you start getting into individual, like, businesses and stuff. Gerald R. Ford Council, the Boy Scouts, the railroads are exempt. Now, we just had Spectrum Health, the station on Alpine, that was made exempt just in March. And then a lot of churches follow that, so. Okay, now I wanna talk about property splits and combinations in a minute. 15 to 25 a year is typical. Plats don't count, because that has to travel down through the state to come back to us. So, um, any kind of property split or combination has to go to Kent County Property Description Mapping. They are the keepers of legal descriptions, maps, and parcel numbers. So they would do the actual split there, and then when they're gonna do their part, it comes back to me, and I have to do the split on our system, and then allocate the values to the new parcels. And page 45 is a property division request, and page 46 is a combination request. All right, so the State Tax Commission also requires us to do a five-year reappraisal, and that is where we're seeing one-fifth of our residential properties every five years. So we're taking a chunk every year, so we're seeing roughly 1,900 parcels a year. And the first couple times they did it, they were going door to door. This is that last time, pretty much this whole last time. They've been working on this questionnaire, which is page 47, and we've been getting good response to this, a lot of people to this back then. And this is just to verify the information on their property, if anything's changed. We just wanna make sure our cards are as accurate as they can be.
Yeah, another question. So when this came through my neighborhood, my, a lot of my neighbors were quite suspicious.
They tended to be. They tended to be.
So can you, like, how would I explain that to somebody, like, what it is that you're doing with this form?
We have to be fair and equitable, and so a lot, like, I'll give a finished basement, for an example. This, this is one that happens a lot. They'll build a new house, say, on the permit, I won't have finished basement, but a year or two later, they'll finish the basement without pulling a permit. You have to look at it this way, is it fair that we're assessing this guy here for his basement, but not this guy over here that has a finished basement? So to me, it's always a fair and equitable thing. I don't think you're ever gonna get people on board with that, or to not be suspicious about it, but there are a lot of people that cooperate, so.
Good, good, all right, thanks.
All right, so along with the five-year reappraisal, we also, I print off MLS sheets every couple weeks, I go over and see what's listed for sale. And that's on 48, a lot of information on these things. We have, we have cards a lot with these things. And then, to go along the same line of the five-year appraisal, on page 49, this is a parcel from the Apex Sketch Conversion Project. And what Apex is our sketch, so we're talking about earlier. So the blue line is the, is our sketch, and it's laid over this house, over the aerial on the house. And if you can see in this bottom corner, that's the wood depth that we didn't have. And our mapping stuff is so slick, you can go into the side, and they have a measuring tool, you can measure all the way around that house without leaving the desk. So we can pick up stuff through this Apex Sketch Conversion thing. And then there's also Pictometry Change Finder, which is, sorry, 50 and 51. And this happens to be Padnos down on Turner. And this is from the old when Krista started working on the new round of this, but it compared the 2009 aerials to the 2014 aerials, and it pointed out everything that was either new or gone. Padnos had five or six buildings back in there, didn't pull, pull in there. So Tammy was still in the, in the community development time, had that time when it went down, I said, "Look at this, Tammy," and she called him up and made her get this. All right, so, I'm almost done. I also do a lot of annual reports, top 10 tax pair, oh, wait, just skip one, sorry, AMAR. AMAR is the Audit of Minimum Assessing Requirements, and this is done by the State Tax Commission. They, they come in and review, Kent County's being done again in 2021, the first one was 2015. They review our records to make sure we're doing our job properly. And on the first round in 2015, this, page 52 through 54, I only got, we only got one thing wrong, and that was some adjustments that I had on land, I didn't have any reason on it. So all we had to do was send letters saying, "This is what we're gonna do to fix it, this is the timeframe I need to fix it," they were fine with it. And then page 55 through 58 is the next thing we mark. So we know what's coming, we can get everything ready, get it up, prepared. And here is the poverty exemption, the questions they ask. We recently updated, not poverty, property, property tax exemption. So we've updated some forms so that we're complying with that, too. All right, now annual reports. So I do four top 10 tax pairs lists. This one that you see on page 59 is for Walker as a whole. I also do one for each of the three school districts. School districts need it for some, we've been there, paperwork, but those are online, if you want to, I have a lot of this stuff online, on our website. But you can see, my yours is a huge one for us. I also do the statistics, which is the next three pages, 60 through 62, has a lot of interesting information on there. 61, I just wanted to point out, I do a calculation for the average sale prices of homes. If you look in 2005, it was 165,000, and then at the lowest, in '11, it was 126,000. Now we're up to 214,000 for average home price. IFT report, 63 and 64, this is due to the state on October 50th, so this gets done in the fall. That's all of our IFTs, based on those two sheets. There's Renzone, which is page 65 and 66. These are all, these will all be expired by 2024 is the last one, but they're all starting to slowly expire every, the last three years that they're on, a quarter is taken off, so they're slowly getting back into being on full tax. That came into place when the economy was down and the industrials were suffering because of the economy being down, so we brought that into play. This is the personal property report, but I don't know what that's about. Assigning addresses, we assign addresses, Chris does that, to any kind of plats or splits, we have to assign new addresses. And then finally, the budget. We're a small office, we have a small budget, not any big ticket items, nothing expensive. Next to our salaries and insurance and retirement, the legal fees are our hardest line item, and even then, we don't use most of that, a half a ton of school. All right, and I just wanted to introduce you to everybody. This is me and my husband Terry. And my duties include commercial and industrial properties, land value studies, ECS studies, MTT appeals, March border review, exemptions, budgets, splits and combos, reports, AMAR prep, help with residential and personal when they need it. This is Chris Trotter, the deputy assessor, and her husband Juan. She's our residential person, she handles July and December boards of review, she does the IFT applications, she's our main personal property person, she's handles all that. She enters all the documents, deeds, the PTAs, the TREs, she signs addresses, helps with building permits, helps with a five-year appraisal, helps with small claims appeals, what do you mean? And this is Rachel Nixon, her grandson, she's our assessing specialist. She handles a five-year reappraisal, building permit, helps with residential, helps with personal property, she sets up the, and schedules the March border review appeals. She scans and attaches all of our documents, so when we pull up a parcel, everything's right there. She does filing, she's the main contact person. And that's it. Any questions? Thanks.
Kelly, I thought, I seen her esteemed judge in the back of the room, I thought after the court presentation, we couldn't raise the bar any higher, this, this is pretty darn good, so, outstanding. You know, one of the things that I learned about Kelly is the, her certification and the investment that she's made in her trade, her craft. There, she is a very, in a very small select group that is a Level 4 certified in the state of Michigan.
I just said 130 of us.
And that's it in the state. And to think that we have her here, and you just look at the smoothness, and we learned something with the sketch, the Apex software, and it's pretty impressive, so I can see why we do it as well as we do. Appreciate all your efforts, Christina, as well. And really, it, for a city, that depends on this as much as we do, that information. It's definitely above and beyond performance you deliver back to us, I think, on behalf of the commission.
Thank you.
Commissioner, is there anything else? Good, Darrell, go ahead.
Hey Kelly, quick question for you on the pictometry project. Didn't you do some stats the first time we did that, to see how much value you added to the role as a result?
I probably have it listed somewhere.
Okay.
How much?
I also have stats on, since we started the five-year reappraisal every year, how much we're adding value to that, because I've got this.
Yeah, I didn't look at all the stats, but the investment for the pictometry was, what, $10,000 that we paid over three years for, for us to be, have that availability and to add that much to the roles, just that simple, of a program that they can do at their best time, that's awesome.
This is our BSNA program, it will do everything on, this is my house, I live over on Kings Row Court. Has all kinds of information in it, tons. And we bring this in here for border review, we have a border review in here. So I have all this stuff at my fingertips, so everybody can see what we're working with.
Outstanding. Thank you again, Kelly.
Thank you.
All right, it is 7:01, we'll give our deputy clerk a minute to get things in order. And while we're waiting, welcome everyone to our guest. And we'll let you, Jess, we'll let you roll through that, Commissioner Glanville, if, actually, you want me to wait a second, Jess, or?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll call them. Okay, we'll go ahead and we'll, we'll call them meeting to order, and I would like to ask Commissioner Glanville to do the invocation, please.
If you can bow your heads. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice. We're grateful today for our many abundant blessings. We're grateful for our first responders who give selflessly to protect and serve the community. We're grateful for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. We're grateful for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Please grant us, our city officials, our mayor, and this assembled council, wisdom, courage, and grace to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times with a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and brightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and that we may find personal peace and joy in our task. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like everyone to invite everyone to stay and join us for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And we are...
Sorry, my screen will not black over here.
For our guest, we've been having a little challenges for a couple of weeks now with our iCompass system, so we're getting there. It's usually about the time I come up with a corny joke or two, but I won't do that today. All right. Perfect. Almost, all right, we're there. Good, thank you, Judge. And Judge Fruslu, I see you in the house, we'd like to ask you and Elena Heizenga to come up to the podium for the swearing-in of our newest commissioner.
Do we have the older ones listening off in the heart? I pretty much do.
Almost. Actually, right, Your Honor, here she comes.
Are you gonna do this? Is your writing, your duty after me? I, Elena Heizenga.
I, Elena Heizenga.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
The Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of third ward commissioner.
To perform the duties of the third ward commissioner.
For the city of Walker.
For the city of Walker.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Help me out. Commissioner, congratulations.
Thank you.
Come on, Laura, come on.
Think you'll do a funny job, and we look forward to having you be my commissioner.
So I'd like to invite the family up to take pictures. Miranda is there helping us out with things, and, Jessica, I know you're multitasking, so we'll get you.
Is it better?
Yeah, perfect, thank you. And then can we make sure Elena and Elena's got the right spot, perfect? Awesome. Yes. And then, Miranda, what we'll do is we'll get a couple of family pictures real quick.
Go ahead.
And then, after that, we'll take, after the family pictures, we'll take a quick picture with the new commission. And then Judge Fruslu, so if you'd be so kind, we have Dr. Taylor here, being sworn into the planning commission. I see him in the back of the room as well, so we'll get a two-for-one hearing. All right, Heizenga family, come on up, if you wanna grab some pictures with Elena, wherever you would like there. Grandparents, I see you in the back of the room, you can't hide. Commissioners, if you wanna come down, we'll wait right here, we'll get a picture down there. What's there? Grandpa, Grandma, I see grandparents, so come on up.
I can't, I was already destroyed yesterday. I drove back.
And then Miranda, one more, with the boy, perfect? And also, this will be like herding cats, we'll get.
Be similar to the last one you guys had.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. We're having fun, all right?
We're having fun.
Right there. All right. So we will next, next, first off, welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll just review up here.
Yeah.
All good, so, perfect. All right. And then next on our agenda is swearing-in of Dr. Joe Taylor as our newest planning commissioner. Judge Fruslu, I believe we have the sheet right up in the book, Claire? Yes. Oh, yes, actually, real quick, as Judge is doing that, I asked the clerk to call the roll, sorry, I jumped down.
Okay, Mayor Carey.
Present.
Commissioner Kent.
Present.
Commissioner DeShane.
Present.
Commissioner Heizenga.
Present.
Commissioner Groders.
Present.
Commissioner Glanville.
Present.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Present.
You got everybody down, we're awesome. All right, Your Honor, the floor is yours.
Everybody knows Dr. Joseph Taylor?
Yes. Might have delivered a couple in the room, possibly, by chance.
Dr. Joseph, you raise your right hand to the field. I Joseph Taylor, I Dr. Joseph Joseph Taylor, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, support the Constitution of the state of Michigan, and to faithfully perform the duties of the office of planning commissioner for the city of Walker in the best of my ability to help you guys, how do I say it?
I do.
Taylor, congratulations.
Judge Fruslu, thank you very much for always accommodating us, and we appreciate your support and relationship with the commission.
You're very so welcome.
Thank you. And Dr. Taylor, we have a tradition for our newest ones coming on board the commission. Might take us a little longer to come down there, if you wouldn't mind, would you circle up around the dais up here? And each of us wanna shake your hand and say congratulations, welcome aboard.
Hey, congratulations, very nice, proud of you.
Congratulations?
Thank you, yes. Thank you very much. Steve, thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Taylor, and we are all set for the night, we'll reach out to you soon, thank you. Thanks again, Judge. Thank you, Miranda. Now, I'm not a superstitious person, but sometimes the old ends when we start off your first night with bumpy technical things. Just kidding. We're all ready to go then. All right, great, so we have everything in order for the group here. Approval of the minutes, looking for any questions, if not, a motion to approve. We can put those two together, both, both the meetings on May 13th, for the meeting and the regular meeting, and then the special meeting and interview with the third ward finalist.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner DeShane, support.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Groders, any other conversation around this? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion to pass, awesome. I will now open up public comment on the agenda items. That's why you have paper copies, you have. All right, I see no comment for the public, or see nobody for the public comment. Well, next on our list is the consent agenda. There are three items on here, one is the expenditure to the amount of $496,734.89. We also have the range agreement with the police department that has been updated. Lastly, is the city of Walker and city of Grand Rapids cost sharing agreement for preventative maintenance of the North Park Bridge over the Grand River. Are there any questions or dialogue around these items? Darrell?
Yeah, with Scott and Greg both here, I asked them to come and give you a brief update, I know they provided a memo. You have Greg's probably up first, they're on the range agreement, and give you a little bit of background, I think will be helpful. I'll answer some questions real briefly. So the, I think the memo made it to, and what it is, is accumulation of many, many years. And I was able to research back 11 years, when we had the first written agreement with the property owner down on the, on the range. For those who don't know, we're down on Butterworth Street, right at the Grand Rapids-Walker city limit to the east, to our east, I should say. So we've enjoyed the, the facilities, the property down there for, I'm gonna guesstimate, probably 20, close to 20 years now. Because we had a range, and we transitioned over to the automatic weapons systems, so it's a good 20 years, probably. But I could find, I could find documentation going back 11. So what we've done is entered into an agreement with property owner, VECOFT Properties, to maintain that facility as our firearms range. And as such, it's getting used quite a bit, both by us, but it also gets used by a lot of our partners, whether it be law enforcement partners or non-law enforcement that are related, such as the Grand Security College Police Academy, is the, is by far the most frequent user of that facility down there. We have Brink's Armored Car that uses the facility, and then Spectrum Health, they have recently started arming some of their security personnel, so they have the need to do that firearm, or the qualifications. And now, we are also being asked by Meyer Corporation, they're gonna be bringing some current security onto their property, so they need a facility for that. So we started doing a little bit of research and figured out that the majority of the use of that property is by outside agencies other than Walker. We're down there a couple of times a year, once in the spring, once in the fall, and we may be down there for a couple of SRT shoots, or Special Response Team shoots, but by far, the majority of the use is outside agencies. Over the 20 years, a lot of the property's starting to deteriorate. We're getting some pretty major sinkholes down there, the asphalt's starting to kick up now, and we're starting to see some fencing that's starting to drop from the trees, et cetera. So a couple of years ago, we entered the idea of doing some improvement down there after Darrell and I met with the property owner back in summer of '16 to confirm that our agreement would still be valid and stand strong for the many years in future. Doug VECOFT did assure us that the property's ours. He has no intentions to do anything with us before we bring more money into it. So what we wanted to do is just update it, make it safer for those that are using it, and then bring it up. Nothing significant, other than just putting some new asphalt pad down, filling in a lot of those sinkholes. But as I mentioned, as we started looking at some of the scheduling, we noticed that a lot of the, the usage was outside agencies. So I did some research, figured out that Grand Valley State University uses Wyoming's firearms range, and they pay them $3,000 a year to use it, and they use it on average about 11 times, I think it was. So it comes out to be about $270 some dollars per use, per day. We did not charge anything for our range use. So my, my rationale is, is if we're gonna put money into this to improve it, which we need to do, the cost should be shared by the users that are gonna be using it. I've had offline conversations both with Spectrum Health and Meyer Corporation, and they're both, both those companies certainly on board with it, because you're not gonna find another range for, my proposal's $250 a day to use that range. My, my goal will be to take that money in and continue to use it for property maintenance, upgrades, whatever else needs to be done money-wise down there, whether it be new fencing, new, new asphalt at some point in time. And then also, we also go through a lot of target, our backings, et cetera, we make those out of wood, though. So the expense, the big expense is just gonna be getting it up to speed, tearing that asphalt up, bringing in some fill, filling in those sinkholes, and then putting a level of asphalt down on there. So I had our range master Sergeant Levine do some research for me, and that's where I discovered that the biggest users are Grabs Police Academy. They use it on average about 10 to 13 days a year, and they're usually using it in the middle, or February, January and February now, switched from the fall to, to winter. Next is Spectrum Health, and they use it anywhere from seven to 10 times a year. And then Brink's Armored uses it less than that, and then of course Meyer's coming on more of this. So the usage is gonna be pretty, pretty consistent with what we've had so far. We control the rules of it, we do not allow any after dusk shooting down there. So if you should get any complaints down there through the work commissioners, that's not us. We shut that down at dusk. I think what's happened is a lot of the noise occurring from Wyoming and Grand Rapids, which is right across the river. But we ensure that there's nobody down there shooting after dusk, and then we also are very concerned, are concentrated on no Sunday shooting. So we keep it quiet during the weekends, Saturday afternoons. we keep it quiet during the weekends. Saturday afternoons is the latest that's getting used by that academy. So that's how we got to where we're at. We had some conversation, Darrell and I did as far as, you know, what is the most logical way? We've had this agreement in place, the one, the proposed agreement that I've ordered to you. That's been in place for many years now between us and Grand Rapids Community College. The only thing we did is just added on a fee to it. Now the rules and the agreement language remain the same. It's just that we are now proposing that we start collecting some fees for the usage of that facility to maintain the monies, the state, in the facility for improvements and whatever else is needed down there. Our equipment and our ammunition comes out of our budget still. This will be simply for any type of continued improvements needs. We're not considering building any permanent down there. We have a garage down there right now. And our shoot house is comprised of plastic barrels, which actually works very, very well. So the cost will certainly be just for maintaining what we're going to get to, and hopefully we'll maintain it for another 20 years.
Commissioners, any questions? Pretty cut and dry. Anything else, Darrell?
Well, just related to this, the first resolution that you have on the agenda after the consent agenda is asking to grant the authorities. So when we have these requests come in, that I can sign those instead of bringing each one to the commission, because sometimes they come up midweek or at any point. So that's what that first resolution relates to, exactly what Greg's talking about here. So if there's any questions on that, Greg's here as well. I was going to say this, some steps, save you some agenda items.
Good here. Anything else?
I was just going to say, $2.50 a day seems to be pretty inexpensive.
Yeah.
For the four in a day. So I think it'll be a win-win if it'll help maintain it, I hope.
And this has been a conversation for quite some time. We're just trying to figure out a way to make it, as Kelly was saying, equitable and fair to everybody that uses it. We just didn't want to throw a fee on it, no matter if you use it or not. So now we've decided, you want to come and use the range as yours, under our rules, under our control, under our schedule, but the cost is going to be on you if you're a non-law enforcement entity. The reason we did non-law enforcement, to be quite honest with you, is there's a lot of quid pro quo going on with our law enforcement partners. So when we have a presidential visit at Delta Bucks, we have every law enforcement agency in Kent County come out on their time, their money, supporting us. So we do the same. It's kind of a give and take. We use Kent County's indoor range in February, and we don't get charged for that. They don't usually use ours too often, but sometimes for longer range, longer range weaponry, they'll come down to shoot their rifles down on ours.
Makes sense? I think we're good for our side.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the list, the City of Grand Rapids, City of Walker Call Sharing Agreement for Preventative Maintenance of the North Park Bridge over the Grand River and Lake Hunters.
Another easy one, I hope. We own the North Park Street Bridge with Grand Rapids 50/50. You might remember that a couple of years ago, we were having some discussions about the condition of the railing and the lampposts and things. A lot of the paint was coming off, primarily from the railings. And we had put some money away for a project to work on that jointly with Grand Rapids. Well, they took it a step further and did some inspection work on the bridge to discover some other things that are a little harder to see for the common driver that's going over the bridge. But the bridge also needed some abutment work, and they applied for a grant from the state's Grant Fund, Bridge Grant Fund. And we're successful in getting that. So we've been able to combine the railing work and the abutment work into one project, and actually save us a little bit of money, because I think we were planning on $50,000 to $100,000 for railing repair. And our number at this point is $40,647. And that includes all of the engineering and inspection and all the work with it. So pretty straightforward. I think the more confusing part of the agreement is that it includes some work that Grand Rapids is doing on two other bridges. So when you look at Exhibit A, it also shows costs for Ann Street, Bridge Street. We can kind of disregard that, because it is part of that bid project. And so they wanted to make sure that the exhibit was accurate.
Commissioners, any questions?
Would probably a guess be they threw all three bridges together to kind of enterprise?
Correct.
That's good.
Yeah, I think to your point, Scott, the, what we had planned on this caught me, that this is not something that, this is a surprise. We knew this was coming from our new commissioners up here.
Probably long overdue. You guys did a good job on this. I mean, Walker doesn't have nearly as much invested as Grand Rapids and something we need to do.
And they've done a really good job taking care of us with this bridge, because they're staffed more to handle a big piece of infrastructure like this. They're being a good neighbor.
They're going to be administering all things on our behalf.
That's wonderful.
Even better.
Oh, I was an inspector when this bridge was built, so I do have a little experience. Was mostly crying as they swung me on the crane back and forth.
How long ago was that?
A long time ago.
All right. Any question, commissioners, any questions for Scott before we let him? Let him off the door? I think we're good on Scott. Thank you very much. So entertain a motion for the three items on the consent agenda. Expenditures in the amount of $496,734.89. The Walker Police Department Range Agreement that we just reviewed, as well as the City of Walker and City of GR Call Sharing Agreement for Preventative Maintenance of the North Park Bridge over the Grand River.
I'll make motion.
Motion, Commissioner Gilbert?
I'll support.
Support for Commissioner Glanville. Any other conversation? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion pass. Consent agenda passed. Thank you. Right next on our list is Resolution 19-523. Darrell, I'm aware of this and in support of this from Meyer, we get a little background color behind that. It's going to save us some admin time.
Exactly.
Pretty cut and dry.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. So basically, that resolution is just allowing Darrell to sign the delegation of the unlimited four authorities, the contracts, what have you. I'm very comfortable with that. Range agreement's a perfect case of that, that we're not coming back multiple times and delaying things. So any dialogue or questions on this?
Just a clarification. Is this only as applies to the range agreements?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion for approval then.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Motion for Commissioner Kent. Support from Commissioner DeShane. Any other questions or dialogue? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Resolution 19-523 passed. All right. Next on our list, Resolution 19-524, to appoint Elena Heiziger as their Board City Commissioner. You still have a chance to run if you got me. You're good. All right. I'll entertain a motion for support.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Commissioner Groeters. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support Commissioner Glanville. Any other conversation? I'll take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion pass. Resolution passed. Next on the list is Resolution 19-525. Basically, what this is, commissioners, is for, I think, believe, in the best interest of Commissioner Heiziger in ramping her up with the background as she learns the role, is I just reappointed her to, recommended reappointment, to replace former Commissioner Holland on the exact same board through the end of the calendar year. And then we'll evaluate at that point in time where everybody will be at. So that is all that is. So the appointments are just replacing, again, former Commissioner Holland. And I, after speaking with our clerk, I thought it was best we have that in the form of a resolution, just to keep things clean. So any questions or dialogue around this? I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make motion.
Motion, Commissioner Gilbert. Do we have support?
Support.
Support Commissioner Kent. Any other conversation? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Resolution 19-525 passes. Next on the list is ordinances. It's our second reading of ordinance 19-646, Amendments to the Marijuana and Related Ordinances. I don't even think we need to bother the chief with this one. This is our second reading on this. So ask the commissioners first. Any questions on this one? All right. I'll entertain a motion for approval for the second reading of this ordinance then.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Commissioner Groeters. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Glanville. Any other conversation? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, second reading of ordinance 19-646 is passed. Next is the second reading of ordinance 19-647, the Amendments to Consumer Fireworks Ordinances. Again, we've had some conversation around this, some clarification. I think we're good and up to speed on this. Any other conversation around this ordinance?
Yeah. Is this the one that doesn't mention marijuana? And I thought we were going to add that in, or we don't need to? I don't know. I forgot.
Chief, did we need to add that in?
The community recommendation was what I forwarded to.
Yes, or an email.
Yeah.
Her recommendation was to leave as is.
Oh, okay.
Because to make it simple, you start identifying certain controlled substances.
Yeah, that's right.
It becomes a non-ful substance. We're coming back and.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Thanks.
Good question. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Glanville, do we have support from Commissioner Kent?
Sure.
Any other just conversation around this ordinance? We have, or a motion for Commissioner Glanville. Support for Commissioner Kent. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ordinance 19-647 passes. Next on the list is ordinance 19-648, to add Section 94-39 to the Code of Ordinances entitled Mullins Avenue Precise Flat. We've definitely altered this one with a fine-toothed comb. Any other conversation, discussion around this? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Commissioner DeShane.
I'll support.
Support for Commissioner Groeters. Any other conversation? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, second reading of ordinance 19-648 passes. Also in your packet, you have the department monthly reports packet. I'm sure you all had a chance to take a peek at it. Definitely some good stuff going on in the departments. Scott's already left the room. When looking through the engineering department packet, he is definitely getting, put him, Travis, and Rachel, put some hours in right now. So a lot of good things going on. So that's for your review. Any other public comment? All right. Then we'll jump to Mayor, Commissioner, and City Manager comments. Darrell, welcome back from Poland. You can start the heat up.
Thank you. Really just trying to finalize the budget in anticipation of the public hearing, hopeful adoption at the June 10th meeting. So working on finalizing that and catching up on the things that I've gone last week. You guys kept everything rolling in a good shape. I think you're more welcome to Elena. You're serving as our youth commissioners. And Gary, you got a top spot.
Shawshank?
Wednesday, 5 o'clock, ordinance committee will be discussing changes to, potential changes to the liquor license ordinance, and then the policy for quota licenses. And just so you know, the folks from the O-Fire Post have been invited today. So long on Wednesday.
Thank you. Commissioner Kent?
Traffic's a little heavy on Wall. Or, no, the construction.
You okay?
We expected it. We're good. Thank you. Commissioner DeShane?
Tonight, we had a youth commission meeting, and we discussed the upcoming Memorial Day Parade and the year-end survey. And the leaders of the youth commission are going to be revamping this committee over the summer. And a big thank you to Commissioner Glanville for her wonderful brainstorming session with our group. And hope that we'll have more to follow. Thanks, Travis. You were amazing.
Thank you.
And then I'd like to just take a second to say, welcome, Elena. You did a great job interviewing. I get some very strong candidates. I'm looking forward to working with you. And I think that your civil engineer degree and your planning commission background is going to be an asset to this commission. And I'm also pleased that we decided to add Joseph Taylor to the planning commission, because he's been a lifetime resident with a lot of time on his hands as of late. And this was going to be a win-win for Walker. And then I thought the assessing department, I thought she was very nervous. She did a good job. That was a really robust presentation and fucking through and taking the time to make it personal, to have our own homes on there. Kind of interesting and fun to follow along with that.
A lot of good information, a lot of good statistics. I think you have a chance to look through some of that stuff. A lot, a lot of good stuff.
It is. It is. It takes a little bit to digest, but it's kind of nice to have that to go along with. And then lastly, I just was, when I was reading the staff updates, I noticed that our clerk's department was working with the assessing department to kind of do a check and balance on capturing all the businesses. And I really like that camaraderie. I think that's something that we don't always see. I think that's really good that both the departments are reaching out. So kudos to you guys. That's great.
Commissioner Heiziger?
Thank you. Thank you. I have a gorgeous server with all of you guys.
Commissioner Groeters?
I was contacted by the Standell Reform Church, and they're doing a community garden. They asked me to come and engage with them a little bit. And they're doing an educational piece with students or something, and working with them, teaching the garden. It's right up my alley. So I was excited to learn about that. Welcome, Elena.
Commissioner Michael?
Yeah, so piggyback on that, the Emily, did she contact you? Yeah. So they're going to have a kind of grant opening. So I encourage them to include us in that, in the committee. Although, yeah, I'll probably make that invitation. Okay. So I was at the traffic committee met this week. Nothing major. There's a few minor, you know, issues related to residential street traffic and parking, but nothing outstanding. An update on Wilson and Richmond. We are in the grant window again. So I believe they said that grant applications will be due in about six weeks or so. Some residents had asked about putting up some no passing signs there. M.Dot was not in attendance, so we didn't really discuss that, because they would be the ones, of course, to handle that. I was also at the Waste to Energy Advisory Committee. We're done on our work for the budget this year. We did make a recommendation on the tipping fee, which is going to raise it by quite a bit. And that's the amount that really generates the bulk of the operating revenue for the incinerator. They did a really nice job, Dar, Bass, in negotiating a new price with Consumers Energy, where we're going to be getting right around $86 a kilowatt hour for the next 20 years. We had to update that a little bit early in order to let, like, get that price, but it's a good amount above what would be normal. And it's really smart, because electric energy use is dropping. So the fact that we're laughing on that price for 20 years is a benefit to the county. The other thing I think we need to look at is the city commission, is just the sheer volume of trash that's generated continues to be an issue. The incinerator is operating at well over capacity, and it has been for some time now. So we talked about, like, what are some of the education outreach things we can do as a city? And one thing that I wasn't aware of is that at the Recycling Education Center, which is just over by the Coca-Cola plant, they actually have boxes of flyers, brochures, and things that we can get for free. And it would be really nice to maybe put those out at some of our community events. I just thought, you know, something we can do to help people recognize how they might be able to generate less trash, because we're looking at how we can, I mean, the price, we're going to end up paying more for waste removal in some capacity, in some way, right? That tipping fee gets passed on. And so they're looking also at how we might be able to, if it would be pertinent to enter into a county-wide blended trash program, which means everybody would have recycling and waste removal. And then also maybe possibly reviewing the Six Cities Agreement and considering how we might include townships in that. So there's a little bit more shared cost, because populations have changed significantly since that agreement first went into place. But those are, you know, not things that we, as an advisory committee, advise on, talk about those things. So it might be nice for us to reach out to county commissioners, take a look at what's going on there, and just give your thoughts, you know, or ask how we can, you know, how we can do a better job in Walker. You know, we get in a lot of side conversations there. One thing that I never thought of as an issue is mattress disposal.
Oh.
They're really big. And they can't be burned, and they can't go anyway. Things like that, like, how can we deal with that kind of trash removal? So. And then the last So, and then the last thing, I was at the Lower Grand River Organization of Watersheds. On Friday, they had their spring forum over at Blanford. And I just want to call on our engineering department again because I was really excited to see Rachel and Scott there as leaders in that group. They're actually chairs of some of the subcommittees. I knew Scott had lead as a past president. So, you know, they're very active in that. So, I thought that was pretty exciting. Again, going back to this idea of just increasing awareness around some of the, what I like to call low-hanging fruit, things we can do to help keep the watershed clean, maintain that. And there's some real simple programs, like adopt a storm drain where people can just pick one on an interactive map and then that's your storm drain and you can keep it clean. So, some, some simple things that we might be able to promote. I've also been approached again by, or increasingly by some residents, asking about the River Waterway project. And some people at the forum are asking me where we stand as a commission, especially given that Granville voted on it last week. So, that's top of mind for a lot of people. And if we'd like, I have the contact for a gentleman at the Michigan State University Sea Grant Extension Program, which is education and outreach around water quality issues, fisheries, things like that. He's done some very good balanced reporting around the Grand River, the health of the Grand River, and what dredging would look like from a pretty balanced perspective. So, he would be an opportunity if we want to follow up and get some discussion.
I, I would. I get a lot of people asking me about that. I think that would be, even if we did it in a small, little group, just to get a half hour of his time to just educate us a little bit.
I mean, we have opportunities during our 6:30 time if appropriate. Yeah. I'm, I'm a little, as I shared in the conversation, my position's not changing. I think for us to take a position right now is extremely premature and I have two reasons for it. Number one, the testing, sediment testing is not done yet and it's in the process. So, it may be all for naught of us taking a position because we could be in favor of it and find out they can't do anything as a result. So, that's one. And the second thing is, I think when it comes to really from a jurisdictional perspective, we have no control of the waterway. If the state wants to do it, the state's going to do it. So, our symbolic vote, I almost feel it's, it's energy I'd like to expend elsewhere at this point without us getting too far into the weeds. But that, that's where my position is right now. I think if we can take a wait and see, attitude here is we get closer.
So, I'm not suggesting that we vote on anything. I just thought it would be useful to have more information on the project. And I know a lot of people have asked about it, so I was thinking if we could.
I think if we, if that's shared, that would be helpful. If there's a presentation.
I'd love to get educated on it.
Right.
And I think that that is a great resource that Carol brings up. And I agree, we don't need to make a stand, but it's hard to make a stand when you don't know, I guess, enough about it.
Well, it's, it's, there is, there's factual information on both sides of it. And then sometimes you could get caught on, on one side, we know whichever group it is, and it's hard to make an objective, fact-based decision. Everybody says, here's the facts. And if you really, if we can have both sides become their own conclusion. So, I'm all on paper of that. And then I think with that, for me, the one caveat is really what I'm waiting to see and watching, but I, I'm still, I don't think we would have got to as far as we have on the Grand River, what with the Restore the Rapids, if it was as bad down there as it is upriver. But again, I don't know what I don't know. So, I'm making assumptions that are really not fact-based.
They need an update on the Restore the Rapids project, too. And that's actually been scaled back a little bit, a lot, due to some of the ecology, like the endangered animals and things like that. They've had to re, you know, rethink that budget along those lines.
Yeah, Carol, for like the entire time that they've talked about the Restore the Rapids stuff, there's been so much discussion around what, what species that you're kind of keeping segregated from one another with the current layout and how they were going to face those challenges. Because I remember when I was interning with the city of Grand Rapids in like 2013, we were talking about that. And like, here we are, six years later.
Still have it.
Same conversation. So, yeah, I do remember.
I mean, we know that there's going to be an impact to some things. What the impact is, we don't know quite yet. But, yeah, it's interesting. Good dialogue, so, okay.
Well, we have a lot. I mean, the, we're sitting on a pretty big chunk of the watershed, you know? So, I think it would be good for us to know, just as a commission, too, as we look at development, if we're working on the master plan, what are some of the things we need to take into consideration in regards to that?
Okay, look, and this is to the uneducated math measure here. I think I came up to about seven, somewhere north of seven miles of Grand River Waterway that we had, does that sound about? Somewhere in that neighborhood, so, significant.
And then if you count Indian Hill Creek, that's another.
Exactly, which has become a very thriving trout. Yeah, I mean, it's, and that was in the shapes.
Right. Yeah, she's done a lot of work around that.
Yep.
All right, that's all we got. Oh, except, welcome, Elena.
I was just going to say that with, with the EPA handed down Wolverine should answer a lot of those questions. Yeah, you know, so, but I also think, too, that if there's any educational things we can do for recycling, you know, to get it to events or something, you know, a lot of times it'll come through the schools, but not, not always. So, but if there's something we can do, it's always good to get that information out, I feel.
Agreed, because we're not really on a sustainable course right now. You know, that's, I think we can all, okay, you know, come to that conclusion, so, all right. Good, anything else?
Not, nope, I'm done.
Okay, hold on. But good dialogue. Commissioner Gilbert?
Yeah, so, planning commission met on Wednesday. Another good meeting. Elena's last meeting. Sad to see her go, but look forward to her contributions here on the city commission. A couple of things that we'll see coming along on the ordinance side because that meeting was centered around moving some of the many ordinance pieces that we've been working on. That committee has been very busy as well. We, we have the sign regulations coming through, so increasing the frequency because we had some pretty important characters who were out of, out of compliance with that frequency, including some on this site. We had the clarification in our ordinance of storage capacity requirements. It was written in a way that was pretty unfeasible, I would say. So, they kind of tapered it back to what the implications were intended to be of that ordinance. And then we had, let me take a look, Standale signs, so the, the sandwich board signs and regulating the way that those are placed in our Standale district. And then I believe the other one that we moved forward was regulating and defining our solar energy systems onsite. So, for like your different parcels, how we're permitting solar systems, your solar panels, things like that, making sure that we're allowing for it, but that we're keeping it regulated in a way that makes sense. So, all those coming down. The other stuff that we did, that I've done this week, we had rapid board meeting. Lots of interesting stuff there. The Rapids going through a comprehensive operational analysis. So, we're going through reviewing the current service levels, kind of what this region is better suited to and kind of seeing where, where we can take ourselves from where we're at now to where we probably want to be. And that's a, that's a six-year planning model, which in my mind is a very short window, but, you know, we're, we're used to operating here. So, we'll see the fruits of that hopefully in the next year. Hopefully, some calls for service in some different regions, maybe three-mile corridor. And then the, the other item from the rapid meetings is that the later line is having the groundbreaking in a couple of weeks, June 3rd. And I believe they sent invitations to everyone for that.
Yes.
So, hopefully see you all there.
Can I ask a question about planning commission?
Yes.
Was the master planning group going to be coming to our planning commission meeting? Do I remember hearing that?
June.
June, okay. I was wondering, master. Okay, thanks.
All right, that'd be clear. First and foremost, thank you for navigating us through our technical challenges today.
I have to apologize for that. We are working on fixes and we hope to be up and running as soon as possible.
My favorite sweater with all those things, which you did well. Thank you.
Thank you. And then congratulations, Commissioner Heisler.
All right. Good, I'll home stretch here. Welcome, Elena. Obviously, we've covered that. And then Kelly and Chris are gone, but what a fabulous job. And this is, I know that the idea for this came from multiple sources. I just, this group really doesn't care what, who gets the credit for it. But I just, I think this is another example of bettering our education, understanding our departments, so we can help support them and appreciate the, the detail that they, that they give. So, meetings attended. Commissioner Gilbert mentioned the board planning meeting, the later line update. I sent everybody an email with a picture of the stops. I included our department heads that would be somewhat affected. So, you can see those, they're not small pads. They're 60-foot pads. So, they're definitely good in size and I think will make a positive impact to our retail environment at Standale. Also, one small little thing is, we started discussing this a little back, I know, it's about a year and a half ago, was a covered shelter out in front of city hall. And somewhere along the line, visibility was lost sight, probably in the CEO transition at the Rapid, and something I'm pretty passionate about. And I had a conversation with our CEO at the meeting last week and said this is at the very top of my list. And while we continue to look at improving service coverage levels in our city, something as, as simple as that, I don't want to drive by and see somebody standing out in the middle of the rain in front of our, our city offices. So, I think the message is heard loud and clear there. Then hosted two groups here last week. One is, we've been doing a little bit more at the Grand Rapids Chamber. There's some more leadership in roundtable conversations. I think just the Walker Chamber doesn't have the resources for. So, I'm a part of a year-long roundtable program and so hosted eight leaders here last week, just right down on the table down here. Different backgrounds, different vertical industries. And I share it only because the, pretty proud of what we do here and was able to share from a city of Walker perspective, the, the health and vitality of the city and all the things that we have going on. And then for those that might have seen, DeShane was plugging social media. Actually, I had a group of the Zinzou school kids through here. They got to meet the unofficial city mascot Wednesday morning, I think, there at PD. And Shannon is very helpful. So, we have a little fun with, with the kids in here and just some of the cool parts of the, of the job. Upcoming things, I want to prematurely wish Commissioner Gilbert a happy birthday on Wednesday. Wouldn't think I'd let you off, off the, and seeing how we don't have a meeting until June, somebody else turns 29 on the 31st of May.
I'm telling everybody it's 75.
Okay, so that's good. So, happy early birthdays, both of you.
Thank you.
Knowing we have Memorial Day coming up. And just a reminder to pray next week and be prepared for that. Next Tuesday, when we come back from the break, the mayors have started to meet a little more frequently now around the census count committee. That is going to be something that's extremely important for a number of reasons to our city. I share it only as I come back and get more details I'll, I'll provide to you. We've been fairly introductory so far, but speed's starting to pick up here. And that's going to be very important to us in getting an accurate count next year. But there's going to be a lot of needed communication engagement at a local level to make sure that we, we don't miss anybody. So, more to come on that. Community Engagement, June 3rd. This is our former Community Relations Committee. And just to restate that, Elena will be replacing Commissioner Holland on there. And the reason that, again, we changed that name is Community Relations and Community Engagement. We're looking not just to, to host an annual event and pass out some, some trophies. We're looking to engage our, our community, whether the residents or businesses further. So, this is part of that broad encompassing. You know, we're talking about the great idea of the youth committee and reshaping these committees. This is kind of the start of that, of just making sure that's 2019. Are we being, are we relevant right now? Are we accomplishing what we need to do? Looking at the, the mission and the purpose of each of those. So, more on that one. Employee lunch next, or two weeks from today, or two weeks from this Wednesday on June 5th. If you've not been to one of those before, please do make an attempt to come. I would highly encourage jeans and casual clothes because last year, what was it? It was like 85 night, I swear it was hotter than heck out there.
We served ice cream.
No, I was eating the ice cream while I attempted to serve it. So, but that's good. If you can come out to that. It is from a, a spirit of camaraderie and kind of a spirit decor that, that takes place between this body and our, you know, the, the rest of the employees of the city. That's, that, it's a simple, simple investment. It starts at, I believe, noon. If you're there a few minutes early, that's great. Everybody comes over pretty much at noon, eats. And I really like even last year how the commissioners actually sit at different tables. We're not all clustered together. And I know we enjoyed one of those company, but I'm more impressed by the fact that we, we get to know people at the, the different departments. So, definitely if you can make it, it's a good thing. And then I think last, last couple of things here, the, on the fire piece, obviously, we have a announced retirement of our fire chief effective June 30th. One of the things I met with our city manager and HR director this afternoon. And one of the, the approaches I'd like to suggest, I mean, obviously, we all know at this point, we have a retirement coming up, you know, not just, not too much more than a month from now. And after meeting with them, we came up with a couple of ideas that I'd like to bounce off the commission, just kind of get general consensus from everybody here. We have, because of our succession planning initiatives that we've had in place for a few years now, we've developed that next generation of leadership for, for many, if not all of our departments. And one of the, the things that sticks out with fires, we do have some good internal candidates that have indicated a strong interest in, in that position. Now, I say candidates because we don't know if it's one, two, it could end up being five or six. We just don't know at this point. So, what we discussed this afternoon was actually opening up, we already have the job description that was done a couple of years ago when we split public safety back out into two separate departments to be more strategically aligned to the mission of each. So, we have the job description. Conversation we had today was posting that later this week, maybe as late as Friday, maybe a little bit earlier. And it would be up for two weeks, internal posting only right now. And then when we get to the personnel committee meeting on Friday, June 7th, we would know at this point where internal candidates are. At that point, personnel committee will be meeting and we could decide at this point, do we move forward with just our internal candidates or do we need to look at, at opening this up externally? I really want to stand by the succession planning piece and I do believe that we do have a good pipeline, if you will, in here, particularly with fires, we're discussing it. So, I'd like to see us work that process, have that open for two weeks internally only right now. And then also to coincide with that, would like to do something within the fire department because we have a lot of people, sometimes voices we don't get to hear from, that, that I think are really important. So, one of the discussions that we had today was how do we make sure those affected have a voice in that process? And it's sometimes, it's sometimes tough to have that conversation, this is going to be my boss at some point or, you know, it's going to be the chief. And we want people to have that ability to, to give feedback and what they're looking for, that, that new chief and any other feedback that we may need to make an effective decision. So, what the idea that was put out there was, they have a survey monkey, maybe, maybe no more than five questions, keep it very simple. It would go up to the paid-on-call firefighters as well as the regular full-time within the department. We would focus just on fire right now, not, not outside the department. Run that for that same couple of weeks, get some needed feedback, get our internal applicants, who we believe that we're going to have. And then what the suggestion that, that we all collectively came together with is, we then bring that back to the full commission and go through that interview process we just did with our appointed commissioners. And we've seen, I mean, going through it twice in the last few months, we've gotten pretty good at it. I don't know if I'm after thinking that, you know, just having personnel make the decision and recommend in there. I think we all have some skin in the game on this. It's an appointed position. So, however you cut it dry, this is going to come back to the commission. And I just, we collectively felt that this is the, the best way to go so that everybody has a voice in the process. So, long-winded way of saying two weeks internal posting to see what we have internally put in, which we are expecting. And then second is get feedback from the entire department on what are you looking for, what's going to be important? Because I'm not going to confess to know what's important to a guy working out of station, a gal working out of station three, what's going to be important to them? And I want to hear their voice. So, commissioners, questions, comments?
I have a comment. I like the survey monkey.
I like the survey monkey, and I like it that you're going to keep it to a limited amount of questions, I'm not sure what they'll be, but I think it's, it's really good to have that say within the department, because there might be some perspective from a coworker saying, hey, you know, this person might, does a, does a better job at this, or really excels at this, and, and I know there's a lot of talent in there, and I think we do have, I think there's a really good chance that that will be an internal candidate that takes that position, but it's kind of nice to get the perspective of everybody that lives, that actually works in all the different stations, because they interact with the current chief, and we know, maybe, to make our job easier by, by letting them write, the right one writes the job, you're not saying it that well, but.
I understand.
Can I just?
Commissioner Kennesaw, are you reaching?
Yes. Well, I've been thinking more than once, but how many positions do we have in the city there? Right, did we have all this process for Police Chief, two years ago? I guess what I'm looking at is, all of a sudden, now it's Fire, we're going to do it differently.
Same, same. I, I, I think, no, that's actually, it's, we, keep in mind, we split to two chiefs, so you can't, we're, we're, we're right now excluding Fire from that conversation, using that police example, that's not right. I mean, you had two departments that did the same thing for three years ago, whatever it was, three years ago, we did the same damn thing. So, it wasn't just Police, it was Police and Fire, we did it four years.
I guess in the past, we, you know.
I know.
We now doubt it this way, and to me, it's, you know, I, to have, to have two firefighters had to say where their boss should be or shouldn't be, you don't ask, you didn't do that with DPW. Should Gary be the boss or not be the boss, we're going to put it on one here, we're going to do the survey, we're going to do, no, I, I don't, I, what I'm saying is, there's no, there's no protocol. How we do it, we're just going to, oh, I think we ought to do it this way, it's Fire, and we're going to do it that way. I don't feel right.
Dan, with DPW though, I feel that Gary was the, was the best candidate, don't you? For DPW, for that natural succession there?
I don't know, I didn't interview him, but.
Nor did I, but.
Through succession planning, you know, that's why we have it there, now we're going to go, I'll tell you what I'm thinking, we're going to do an end around, put somebody else in there, that's all.
No, but we're doing a.
I'll put money in that one.
We're doing internal, this is internal, we're looking, so, that to me says that we have the more superior candidates within, we're not putting up, posting aside to, to other applicants, we're keeping it within Walker, and those are the people who have the most, the most experience with the city, with our equipment, with our residents, with our, our footprint, everything, so I think that this is, this is good. When you look at the role of the next two people in, in position after Bob, they're pretty new to those positions, right? I mean.
Well, one was on, on Police Department, then he went to Fire Department, he's been there a long time, went to school.
But, I mean, I didn't, I just remember, being the Commissioner, I just remember him just recent, like, as of a year ago, being appointed to that position, so.
Right, because he had to go to school and complete it, we didn't change his job description like we did for other people.
Oh, okay.
That's why it took so much longer for him to do it.
Okay, so.
He had to go through the class.
Well.
And get the degree.
Here's how I look at that. I look at that like in, in the private sector, that I deal with on a work, work day, is that sometimes it's just good to see the feelings and the feedback from the department within Fire, to see that we are putting the right person in, and that's going to help us, that's going to help you and I make a better decision. We want someone robust in there, we want someone to be a leader there for a long time, we don't want to have to keep having this turnaround. I think we've got the right people to pick as candidates, we just need to prove that out.
Can I clarify the survey? It's my understanding that the survey is for us to collect information on the types of questions we should ask, it's not asking the Fire Department personnel to recommend somebody, is that correct?
No, they, they intend us not to, to advocate or not advocate for an individual.
Right, that's what I thought, just to find out what are the qualities.
What's, what's important to them, and I, and I think that the spirit and intent here is, is to give that feedback, because feedback's been given, that maybe we're not listening to what, what they want and what they, they need, and I just, I think that, I think it's a great opportunity as part of the process to do just that.
Well, I, I mean, as a new Commissioner, I don't obviously have the history of the city, you know, but I recall what we did five years ago, I think, in my opinion, I think this is a good process, it's kind of the way things should be, in terms of how you go about hiring and appointing, and I understand we have succession plans, but you still need to kind of put it through that final, is this the right candidate? I mean, you might have thought of somebody you wanted to have in that succession seat, but that doesn't mean they panned out to be the best candidate, and it's worth it to our Fire Department to look at the internal candidates that we have, I think, feels like the right thing to do in terms of, if you look at it objectively, of how to go about hiring.
Yeah, Dan, I, I definitely value what you're getting at there, in that we're kind of pivoting the process, but to that point, I think that I, I would have more questions about the way we've done it in the past, and would hope that we would trend more towards something like this moving forward, because I think that we, there, there's justification to say we haven't been thorough enough in our process for other departments in the past, and we need to, moving forward, really do our due diligence of going through these steps in these important leadership roles within all of our departments, as opposed to reverting to practices that we've done in the past, because that's how we've done it in the past. That, that would be my feeling on this, because I think that, and there is a different nature to our two public safety departments, and the way that, to the point of the survey monkey part of it, getting feedback from that, that level, because we have so many employees at that level in those two departments, getting feedback in that way kind of makes sense to me, but generally speaking, I think that doing the process this way gets us more towards kind of the way that I would like to see us review significant appointments like this in the future, and kind of getting away from a process of just kind of moving the, the person that we decide is the right person forward, and that's kind of my thinking here.
Well, I don't think it, but I feel that, like Daryl or Frank, others would have input on it, but whatever, it is what it is, but I think we can get to about in succession also, so, that's what I see working, but that's the way how I look at it.
If I could make a suggestion, I would suggest establishing a policy for doing this moving forward.
This is part of our conversation here, is the, it is one of the things to the point of what in the past, of cleaning up things that have been done, and I think to even, the company I just left in Beverly was with for six and a half years, you're on the little fast track, and you get promoted, I still, we were a privately-held company, we had to post the job, I had to go through an interview process that was not handed to me, but, I mean, I was going for that job for well over a year in advance, almost two years in advance, and then when the outopening came up, it had to be posted, we had to do, we did it only internally, we did not do it externally, so, that's a private company, held to some of the same H R standards, I mean, there's still policies, procedures you have to follow, I think as a public entity, that, that transparency that we have to, you know, that we have to, we're at least satisfying that with the internal posting, we just can't appoint somebody right to a spot this day in 2019 without some liability through, so we have to go through a process. If we end up appointing a, if there's a succession of two goes to one, and three goes to two, or whatever it may be, then so be it, but we've at least done that process and satisfied the requirements that we have, and the public also, that we represent at this point, says they've done the due diligence, they've done the process, and that's, it's been fair and it's been consistent. I would say going forward, it is going to be consistent, we've talked, this is what the process is going to be. And right now, I don't have it, if you could see, Dan, the Commissioner Policy Manual that is sitting back on my desk, probably thirty to forty different tabs in there, changes of things that are outdated, and we've done things a certain way, that we just, from a, a policy standpoint, as policymakers, we've got to clean those things up. And I know that, speaking with both of the previous mayors, it was on their list of things to update, but they just never got to it, and on that list of, of things that we try and do every day in a part-time role, this is one that I'm just lucky I had a little bit of time to be able to spend towards it, but I almost feel like I'm behind now, because I told Shannon I haven't done a month ago, and we've talked about it as a Commission recently, so for me, I think it's, it's, we're taking steps in the right direction, this is not an isolated thing, this is going to be a new process going forward, we will be consistent with it. So, I'm seeing general consensus, but I'm going to kind of go around, I'll start right to left here, process as described.
Yeah, I, I would like to see this be the way we approach all of these moving forward.
Understood.
Yeah, I would, I would, what Stevie said. I agree.
Okay.
Agree.
I feel it's too involved, disagree.
Okay, fair enough. So, majority here, and so, let's, Shannon, if you will, let's, the posting is, was reasonable to this week, then, we'll run it for two weeks, and then the intent is, we can work out the final details on the communication to the Commission once we have closure on that date, and we'll be at the Personnel Committee meeting on the 7th anyway, so we'll know then what it is.
Did we get to see the questions before they go out?
I think, there was something Shannon did volunteer to take off the plate today, of her and I, we're going to work on it tomorrow a bit, and look at some benchmarking, some best practices. Other entities, other cities have done this, other departments have done this, so we're going to see what else is out there, benchmark to that, and then tweak and adjust to what we need here. So, all right? Okay, that is all I had, anything else for the good of the order? Yes?
I have one request, and I think I mentioned it last year at the luncheon, if you could have the employees wear a name tag in their department, that would really make conversation a lot easier, and especially then, I recognize the name, or the, the name will get imprinted on my brain. I remember visuals.
That's a good, especially with Commissioners, that's a good call-out, so. And I think on the flip side of that, good for the Commissioners to have their name tags and write their name as well, maybe we can just write our names after as well. Okay?
All right.
Good. I will, without further ado, then, on our journey.
Yes, I forgot one thing, gypsy moth update, the hatch, sorry. They're continuing to, continuing to monitor the hatch our consultant is, and we don't have an exact spray date yet, but he's thinking it will probably be the end of next week or the beginning of the following week, so once I have that date, I'll let you know, post everything on social media, so that everybody will know when the helicopter will be flying around, but I heard as early as maybe next Friday, depends on the weather, it's all weather dependent, and they may do different areas of Grand Rapids at different times, even though there's four different communities that are getting sprayed, just depending on how the hatch is going, so.
Saw that map looked pretty aggressive for the spraying, yeah.
Yep. And just a small note, while our chief's in the back of the room, as I was sitting in the, was in the garage yesterday working, and heard all the sirens coming out, hadn't outheard the police sirens first, then I heard Fire coming right after that, as they were getting the station, took off to the crash on Wilson, and we were notified for what it's worth, probably about five minutes from the time of the, I think, the initial dispatch, the call-out for everybody, so, again, we, we appreciate all of that, whether it's you or Chief Walker, I mean, we're, we're hearing what's going on on a pretty timely basis, and that's a significant improvement from years past, so, we appreciate it.
Everybody get it?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, I mean, as it, I, I heard the, I heard the sirens, and you heard a whole bunch of them going, and then, my phone was sitting over on the metal countertop over there, and I heard a buzz, and walked over, and I saw the two-nine-three number, so it came, yeah, it came through quickly, so, appreciate it, but. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn then?
Welcome to the email.
I'll make that motion.
Motion for Commissioner Grodders to adjourn, support?
Support.
Supporting Commissioner Gilbert, to all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're adjourned, thank you.